Okay, we call the meeting to order, it's six oh two. And first, first we have the period of public expression. Okay, um, next, a brief moment of silence for our trustee Gloria Prim Brown, who passed away a month ago. Okay, uh, next up is Al, our auditor, and we have in the packet and
The balance sheet and the other is the listed staple, we call a management letter, if there are recommendations, they're not mandates, they're recommendations. So I don't know which one you want to go over first. I guess maybe we'll go over the financial statement first. Yeah. So the most important page, pages probably three and four. Um, it's known as an independent audit is reported and what's important about this is that you got the correct report that you can get. It says everything is materially accurate. And then of course, it's a generally accepted accounting principles, which is better than what you've had in the past. People in the past, erotic cash basis of accounting, which is not considered generally accepted accounting principles. So this means you're following all like, if you're in a like origin, you're up to code. You're following all the latest rules and regulations, the type of information that's in the report and how it's put together.
So are we now on a cool, thanks, it's already done.
So, um, if you go to page five, it explains how to read the report without the silver queue. Six is just a comparison of numbers from one year to the next, and that would be dollars. If you look at that, I think I was wrong. Pages seven, eight, and nine. A whole bunch of financial highlights and a narrative, you know, with text. So if you're not a number person, you want to focus on those pages and you can kind of get an idea of what's happening. But I'm a number person, so we'll skip over those and I'll, I'll touch on this. We can focus on page ten at first. So what's different about this report than what we had in the past? Is that in the past, you followed cash basis under FASB. This is GASB, governmental accounting standard. And this is really what you could be following because you're collecting taxpayer money. And the reason for that is that when you look at a GASB financial statement, you'll see if you look at page ten and you'll see when you get to page eleven. There's actually two financial statements on this page. The first column where you see general fund is put together under a modified rule. It's, it's close to cash, but not exactly, it's modified. And the reason why you do that is because it's what they call the fund method of accounting. And it allows you to report to the public in comparison to a budget. Right? FASB financial statements like a real corporate financial statement doesn't allow for the comparison to a budget. So the first column here is what we would call the fund method of accounting. Okay, and it's current, it's talking about current assets. The column to the far right, where you see statements of net position, that's the second financial statement. That's actually on the bullet rule method. So if you're a corporation or if you were to look at last year's financial statement, that's kind of what the numbers mirror. Okay, so there's two financial statements on this page. But regardless of what column you look at, cash is cash, right? So right up at the top, I digress for a minute. So this first page ten is what we call a balance sheet. For those of you who are not familiar, this is a snapshot, you can find a picture specifically December thirty one, your fiscal year end. And it's going to tell all the good things that you own, which is up at the top called assets. In the middle is liabilities, which are your debts. Okay, and the difference between the two is your fund balance, also known as your network. That's the bottom third. Okay, so at this snapshot time, when we think about the good things, you know, under assets, the first thing listed is cash. Obviously, that's real important to us. Um, total cash and cash equivalents was two million, four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Most important thing is important is to make sure it's all protected. It was, this was all covered by FDIC insurance or collateralized, which is great. Um, interest rates, now they're improving, so that'll be a secondary. Other assets we have include prepaid expenses, which are things we paid for but not used yet. Think of insurance policies that maybe we paid the next month. Um, we had a little bit of state aid receivable, other, I think that was a refund receivable, hundred fifty eight dollars. The next big thing are investments. We had two million, seven hundred and fifty two thousand, that's our treasury, the CPs and some money market money that was really good set aside and put in the brokerage accounts. Most of that money, the treasuries are a hundred percent safe. Um, the CD was pretty much covered by, uh, was all covered by FDIC insurance, but there was about seventy seven thousand in money market accounts in cash and not all of that was safe. Okay, about seventy five thousand that was safe. Uh, I was uninsured, I'm sorry, seventy five thousand for seventy seven, it's not true. So that's something that maybe you want to focus on. If they're sitting with cash, they tend to put it into something that they think might earn a little bit better interest. But if it's not FDIC insured, it could be, you know, it could potentially one kind of one percent, it doesn't really matter. So you may just want to pull them and say, let's just feel better if it's in something that's protected. Because ultimately that good job is to protect all the taxpayer.
Is that in the recommendation section?
That's probably too small. I might have slipped it in somewhere in the back.
And that's in our fidelity account. So I believe we keep seventy five thousand in that fidelity account, which is the minimum so that we can take gifts of stock. And we have a financial policy, um, which dictates how quickly, like we liquidate that stock within like seven days of getting it. Um, and then, you know, that's it, so.
Like you can tell them within fidelity, like it's just sitting in some kind of a government money market. You just put it in FDIC insurance, right? So like, if it's in TD or fidelity, they each have their own bank they deal with that are FDIC insured. Those, you know, it probably just worked through, not a big deal, I don't expect a bankrupt budget. Probably, you know, just safer that way. So that's the investments. Something new this year, and it's new to you, it's new to me, it's new to everyone, is what you call their right to use asset. Thirty nine thousand, five hundred eighty one dollars. In the past and previous years, organizations, if they had a lease, would just put a little footnote in the back of the financial statement. They would say, by the way, we've got this lease, releasing a copier, postal equipment, whatever it is, we're paying three fifty a month. And that's all that it would show is just a statement in the back. Now, the governmental accounting standards was in the past, we decided that if we have a lease commitment, it should go on the balance sheet. So you'll see a lease liability in the liability section and it's offset by this right to use asset, which is theoretically the value of the copier. And then capital assets and the building, the furniture, the equipment, all that kind of stuff, and the depreciation. This is valued at historical cost, fair market value, sixteen hundred and fifty three thousand. So that's all the good stuff. If you want to look at the bad stuff, you go down to the liability section, you see we have accounts payable of twenty seven thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. That's really small for an organization of this size and shows that we pay the bill right away, I mean, that's right here. Crew payroll represents days our employees worked in December, but we didn't pay them until January. Not that we were holding out on them, it skipped away the payroll cycle. Our long term debt includes the lease liability that we have, thirty nine thousand, five hundred eighty one dollars and our mortgage. So the difference again between the assets and liabilities is our fund balance. That's the bottom third of the page, also known as our network, also known, okay, as a scorecard of our accumulated profits since the library first opened its doors in nineteen ten. So any year we have a profit, our fund balance goes up and then we have a loss, our fund balance goes down. Right, and why that's important is the taxpayers look at that and say, well, if that's accumulated profits, that's how much you taxed that you cannot spend on yet. What are you doing with all that money? Right, why do you have so much? So it's broken down to a few different lines. Non-spendable means money that's part of our net worth, it happens to be those prepaid expenses. We paid for things and not used them yet. So the money is already spoken for, we can't spend it, it's already been spent. The restrictive specific purposes is money that we were given in the past. We use very specifically either to be held for endowment or used for a specific purpose. So we are not free to spend that however we want, we have to spend it the way it was intended when it was given to us.
That would be the sage in the Wagner.
Exactly. The unassigned money is our rainy day. And there you have four million, nine hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, which is way more than you probably should have, way, way more. So typically, um, you know, if you are a school, you're only allowed to have four percent of your budget surplus. More than that is a problem. Libraries aren't held to a strict law or requirement as to how much they can have in their surplus. You're allowed to have anything you want, what did we call it? For you guys to budget, uh, for you guys to borrow money. So it's typically, New York Newsday a few years ago started pulling, you know, libraries that had one fifty percent of their budget surplus. Your budget is probably about three million dollars, or a million and a half is what. And there's different rationale for that, right? I mean, you know, there's some libraries that don't get their money until six months into the year. So if you don't get your money for the first six months of the year, you need cash to live on, right? You also need cash for an emergency, just like we would like to have some cash in our own personal bank accounts should something happen. And then you also need money for future plans, right? So there may be money we want to put a new roof on, or we want to buy some property because we don't have any parking. Good, something become available, we want to have cash to be able to buy it. So what you want to do is what I would recommend to you is that knowing that the size of your unassigned fund balance right now is enough to float the library for nineteen months. You can live for a year and a half without raising any tax dollars. All the public starts saying to you, and I know you probably have plans, why are you raising our taxes when you have all this surplus? What you'll want to do is communicate to them the reason why you have that surplus. Those are called committed funds. So it requires a board motion. But I, what I would recommend the board do is look at your five year plan, look at your ten year plan. Figure out, maybe contact a building engineer. I know you have some heat pump issues, right? So what you could do is make a board motion and say, we want to commit two million, five hundred thousand dollars for capital projects. Construction, fix the heat pump, fix the roof, whatever it is, and it gets it out of that unassigned line. Okay, so it doesn't change anything with the bank account, but it's a way of communicating to the reader of the financial statement for the public what you plan on doing with that surplus while you have it, not that you're just sitting on it. But you want it, you know, um, because it is their money. So, um, that's one recommendation I would make. I know you have plans, I know you have issues going on, so you, yeah.
Yeah, as far as association libraries are concerned, what sort of balances are they showing there?
The same, I mean, you look like a dog. Yeah, I mean, again, usually what most libraries try to do in the unassigned is have between three and six months, depending on how soon they get funded. So usually they collect money after three months, maybe they have another three months worth of emergency money. Then after that, you have to figure out, do I want to raise taxes or am I, am I looking at a building project of some kind, you know? It's very difficult, but like, most libraries have a different layout of the building than yours, but if they wanted to put a back and a roof on you, you'd be looking at a million dollars. So you're not in the position to really, most school district libraries can't borrow one that wrong. So they need to have the money. If they don't have a million dollars to replace the roof, nobody's going to give them a bond for a million dollars. The closing cost is three or four hundred thousand, it doesn't make any sense to get a bond for a small project like that. So, and you know, they don't want to have to go to the taxpayers and have it voted on and all these other things. So you try to, if you have a surplus that's bigger than the six months, commit it for earmarked, so to speak, for a purpose or the people know what it is. But you guys maybe don't have an issue, but other libraries, taxpayers, you're going up by two percent, that's crazy. You have so much money, what are you doing that for? Use some of your surplus, don't raise our taxes. And you haven't had that problem because it's a pre-association libraries and not subject to state controllers. You have state control or controls office, it's controlled by the politicians. And Albany is trying very hard to show that they're looking into the taxpayer. Down will have ordered in many libraries playing, taking a quote fifty percent of their budget surplus. So for that reason too.
Of course, we're, uh, the, uh, you mentioned in your report that, that we have only one fund, we have only one general fund. Would it behoove us to, to separate out and create an, an operational fund as opposed to a reserve or reserve capital or whatever fund? Would that help solve part of at least the publicity aspect of this, what are we talking about?
It's a, it's a great question. I mean, the general fund is where you're supposed to run. You're only authorized when you follow governmental accounting standards to have certain funds. Okay, you can't just make up a fund for any reason. So you're allowed to have the general fund, which is where all the operations flow through. Um, and you'll see when we get to the budget section why it's important. Then you'll have, you can also create a capital fund where you do major building projects. Because the cap, the general fund is budgeted for an annual basis for ordinary everyday expenses. The capital project, as you know, when you do a big capital project, that's something that can span longer than a year. So it doesn't have a budget. So yes, we would create a second column here, it would say capital fund. You could move money into that capital fund to separate it from the general fund. And therefore, some of that four million would be transferred over to this capital fund. And within that capital fund is in way you would pay for things like your heat pump, because it's very difficult to budget. One, you don't know what a big project, you know, big project like that is going to happen. And two, you could do a roof, you have bad weather and a lot of rain and it doesn't get done and it gets postponed for another fiscal year. It makes your budget look crazy. So for that reason, they allow you to have a capital project. So yes, that would accomplish that, but without having a project in mind, it's probably not necessary.
But we, we do have projects in mind and it might be the right time to make that kind of a change. So that like if we have two and a half million dollars or whatever it is that we think we could afford to put into a capital fund and we're going to spend million and a half out of it. I mean, it's just, it seems like a bad time to make that move.
That would be a good idea and at least it would imply to the public what the money is there for. It's not necessarily committed, but the fact that it's in a capital fund communicates that it's going to be used for a capital project.
Would that entail a vote at board meeting to set that up?
Yeah, yeah, well, everything requires pretty much a transfer, a committed fund too, requires a vote, you know? So if you wanted to save, there's lots of libraries that have provided their retirees health insurance. And actuarial firms are required to come in, some of those liabilities are fifteen million, twelve million. So they start to save within the general fund and they commit the money for that purpose. So what I'm trying to say is you can have committed funds within the general fund for just about anything you can think of. But capital fund is fine just for capital, but if it's something other than capital, then you would want to commit money within the general fund. So if everything you think you're going to be doing in the future is capital related, that would be a good way to go.
Is there a way to reverse that without incurring any liability?
So you can commit funds with a board motion and then you can uncommit them. So for example, if you committed a million dollars for employee benefits and then needed it for something else, you just uncommitted. So and the same thing, create a capital fund, transfer money over there and then you could transfer it back to your current owners, so nothing's permanent. These are more communications. The head advantage of the capital fund is that it messes up your general fund budget. And you'll see, like in the past, your financial statements were done using FASB. So there was no budget component to what you were showing the public. When you do GASB, the reason why you do it is because there is, you, you have the public vote on your budget, but then you've never reported to the budget, which makes no sense. So now with GASB, the budget is in your financial statement and then you have to explain why there are significant variances. So when you create, have a big building project and you put all this money in the budget and then you don't spend it. You don't put it in the budget, you do spend it, it becomes a big thing in the back of the financial statement. You're explaining why you're having variance, so creating the capital.
Yeah, but I mean, we're going to be coming to the end of the fiscal year, you know, we're halfway through. And if we establish a fund like this before the next time we're planning an audit, then you're not going to see a big surplus in the general fund.
Right, you would want to do this before June thirty, if you want to do it and you, uh, I'm sorry, before December thirty first, two thousand twenty three. You're going to want to create that so that when I come in and do the financial statement.
So, and I just, um, for clarification, so if a line item is way over budget, the way we handled that in the past is we use money from a line item that is way under budget.
You can amend that, yeah, that'll, that'll become apparent when we get to the next section.
We can still do that.
Absolutely.
I think slider pans, you know.
But it's interesting, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll, I won't forget that. So, um, but that's it. So your, your balance sheet is fantastic, you're in awesome financial shape, you have so much money, you're in good shape. It's just a matter of tweaking it to communicate to the public what you plan.
Which makes sense.
If you go to page eleven now, um, this is a different statement. This is an income, I would call it an income statement or a profit loss in the government underworld, they call it a statement of activities. Now, this is a consolidated view of the general fund. And what we see there are the adjustments, but just the changes that served on the previous page do. The change is to convert from the one method of accounting, the fund method of accounting to the bullet rule method. And you can see here, if you look in the expense section, the bullet rule has things like depreciation and amortization. Right, that's not a concept in the government world. When you're doing a budget, if you wanted to buy a piece of equipment, you have the budget for it. Budget is an expense for equipment, but in the real world, it goes to an asset called capital asset and then you depreciate it over time. Right, so those are some of the variants, so some of the changes that are caused by the two different methods. But you have one fund here, it's the general fund, so rather than look at this consolidated view, you go to the back of the report, you'll see all the same numbers, but more detail, but in comparison to budget. So if you go to page twenty two, it's twenty two, twenty three and before, you'll see the general fund, you'll see your budget there. Um, and you'll see the actual balances. I'm not going to read each line, but I'll go through with it. But it's important to see, um, what you were alluding to before. We have an original budget column and then we have a final budget column, right? So years ago, libraries would go out and, uh, or school districts would go out and they would float a budget for the public that would get voted on. And then the next meeting, they would change all the budget lines around it. So they would put nothing in salaries and everything in educating and then they would take it all around and shift it all back up to salary. So as a result of that, now we have to show the original budget and the final budget. So not that you guys like any games, I understand that, that's the reason for it. So you always have, you can never increase your budget with a budget or nothing. So you can't decide to show more revenues and more expenses, but you can through a board motion shuffle the chairs within the section. Right, so you can take from one revenue section and put it to another, or you can take from one expense and put it to another. So having said that, the top section is our biggest revenue items. Uh, we had budgeted a million, nine hundred and seventy eight thousand for taxes and tax related items and collected two million, nine hundred and ninety one thousand. The bulk of the favorable variance was twelve thousand, one hundred and ten dollars that we had collected in pilot money, payment to a taxes. We're never really sure what we're going to get, nobody ever really tells us what we're going to get. So we budget conservatively, in this case, we didn't budget at all.
So it's a relatively minimal number.
Yeah, but we, you know, and that's what we're explaining on those, those financial highlights in the front of the report, you know, that's what we're saying basically. We didn't know what we were going to get, so we budgeted conservative. When you look at the operating revenue section, here we did fantastic, right? We budgeted only twenty six thousand, five hundred and twenty seven, we collected a hundred thirty six thousand, seven hundred and twenty. We did a hundred and ten thousand dollars better. The biggest variance was gifts and donations, that first line in the section, where we did seventy three thousand dollars more. But we had explained on page seven where the library attributes us for the receipt of a large request, as well as the generosity of the community who donated uh, to the support of Wagner Writing Club. So for those issues, you know, we ended up doing a lot better. Investment income was a lot better because we decided to invest treasury notes. A lot of money was made there. Um, a lot of that is a change in market value. We have investments that will adjust the market value and there was an increase in that. Um, we did have some refunds of prior year expenses, you see that line, we didn't budget anything because you're never really going to budget for something that you don't know you're going to get. Um, and there was a safety dividend that we received from our insurance carrier. And that's what that was. So overall, even though we had actually planned on, you know, a little bit of a loss, we ended up with a hundred and four thousand dollars more for revenues than interest. The bottom of page twenty two, you see our biggest expense category, that's salaries and benefits. We had budgeted one million, three hundred and ninety one thousand of salaries, we only spent one million, three hundred and eighty thousand of salaries. So basically, um, we were ten thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars underspent, which is on, on the total, an amazing job budgeting. Everything really came in, you know, didn't get much better than that. Uh, there was one line now, if you look at the retirement line, that came in thirty one thousand dollars less than budget. And basically, we had a lot of turnover this year, we had some people leaving. We hire replacements, they can't join the retirement system until six months goes by, so we saved a lot of contributions.
But because there is staff turnover and you're not always going to positions, there isn't necessarily going to be a delta there.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have, nobody has a crystal ball, like this actually could be all over the place. Oh, it ends up that we overspend on salaries by twelve thousand dollars and on some health insurance for retirement, one of those things. Um, when people either couldn't join, and we did have a number of people who opted not to join. So that was a big interview to, you don't want to anticipate that they don't have to contribute to us and so that works out. On page twenty three, um, we have our library materials in program section. Uh, we had budgeted a hundred and ninety eight thousand, we came in a hundred and sixty one thousand, who were thirty seven thousand dollars underspent there. Um, not really that big of a deal, a lot of upsetting things, but we have the books for the history room that was underspent by five thousand, nine hundred and twenty. And that just happens to be one of those lines where it's a special collection. We don't see something that really interests us or that we need, we're not just going to spend money on it. So there was nothing that really got us excited this year. Um, programs are something that we're seeing at every library that was underspent by eleven thousand coming out of the pandemic. So some of the public were crazy about, you know, ending, uh, programs. We also didn't offer as many staff constraints we had. That's, that's that. As far as library operations go, the bottom of the page, um, we budgeted two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred, spent a hundred and eighty six thousand, seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars underspent. Um, again, a lot of variances going in each other, each different direction. Um, the third line, next, computer peripheral, we ended up overspending, uh, because there was a lot of, just read it, I think there was a lot of pent up demand.
We, uh, I can tell you, our technology replacement schedule was not followed during the pandemic. And so, um, we had a lot of computer stuff we had to replace.
We also had some telephone equipment in there and furniture that was under the capital limit, so that was probably due to me more than it was you. Um, you'll see when we get to the next page, we have a capital outlays action. So if something is not, um, significant enough to be depreciated, we take it out of the capital outlay and we moved it out like this and that's all significantly underspent. Um, one thing to note also on page twenty three, two things to note. Um, you see they have the line that's a copier lease? That was underspent by five thousand, one hundred and sixty one dollars. That's because when the budget was put together, um, that's where you get it budgeted to make your copier lease payments. But because of the new GASB governmental rule that happened with the leases, and now it's considered like a liability when you sign a lease. The payments for the lease have to be shown in the debt service section, you'll see that on the next page as well. So this wasn't a budgeting mess up, this was an accounting. Blame us, blame the towns. Um, the travel and professional development line was way underspent, but again, because of the pandemic, people weren't traveling, they weren't going to seminars. When there was seminars, they were virtual.
Yeah, I was going to say that so many of them now are virtual.
Yeah, so there was a big saving that they made there. Um, okay, so onto page twenty four. Building operations overall looks great, you know, small budget variance there. Capital outlay, okay, we got a few things going on here. Big capital expenditures was underspent by thirty four thousand dollars and that was due to the pandemic. The library postponed several of its planned projects. And then the right to use assets, another new concept. You guys didn't budget for, but when you sign a lease for a copier now, it almost shows up in the purchase, that's like what this is. Well, set by, you'll see further down where you have that line that says other financing sources, lease proceeds. So that's the money that basically the, the copier company lent us to be able to buy the lease, you know, to buy the copier. So those two numbers, all of that one, okay? I will counting tick back as well. Um, if you look at the debt service section, you'll see that was overspent by the sixty two hundred dollars. And that's pretty much all applicable to those, the principal and interest on the leases, which we moved from the previous page to this page. So a lot of confusion, a lot of moving parts, but overall, a good job, you had a profit. I would call it profit or an excess of revenues over expenses of two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And that's why your fund balance went up, you see the bottom two lines, we had a fund balance last year of four million nine. You add the two hundred and eight thousand to it, it goes up to five million four. Yeah, I don't believe that here, your, um, network. Yeah, not only is that here, your um network, but it's your scorecard of your problems.
Not too shady.
No, that's, that's a pretty good job, so really good job, good budgeting.
Now, can I ask you, thinking of regard to some of the adjustments that you made on the capacity, whatever. We're not gonna see those next year, I would assume, right?
Uh so even on the footnote for the correction and things like that.
Yeah, whatever it is, lots, some of those things, um like with the leases, you know, because now they'll be in the correct.
Well, things like the leases, I mean, you know, you've already done the budget, you probably easier just to budget for those and to pay them out, and the lease line might go with. And when I come in, I'll probably give it to the debt service section, that's really just tic-tac-toe. Um but the conversion from the one method to the other is, was particularly difficult this year because there was no, I had to basically do two audits almost. I had to go back to last year and calculate a lot of these things. So we probably spent about thirty thousand over at the time doing the work this year. But that will duplicate because now we have this.
A lot of the stuff is front-loading a lot.
Right, yes, and now I know what these numbers are, they'll get reversed out, those expenses will get reversed out, we'll put the new ones in, but yeah, a lot of time to be saved next year at that.
Going through the last two years, I know you were doing that, we had that meeting. Anything um kind of come out at you that maybe voices done properly or?
No, I mean, he, I don't, I don't wanna say things weren't done properly, I'm sure he gave you a contract. That said, you know, we're gonna do BASB and it's gonna be on a competitive basis of accounting. So that's what you agreed to, that's what you got. That's not optimal, it's suboptimal, maybe, I don't, you don't, why would you go through an audit and not get the best report that you can get, right? So if you see the opinion, it says this is not in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. To me, that's not, you know, uh it's faster, you know, it takes less time. And maybe if you got the impression with the B that you didn't wanna spend the money, or maybe that's what you guys told him, I don't know. I wasn't sad, but I wouldn't say he did anything wrong, you know, he did what you guys agreed to do. So, but I think this is a much better report, if you agree to hear the fact, I won't profit just looking at this. Because it says it's in accordance with generally accepted accounting. When someone reads it doesn't, it, it, then they don't know what's not there. It's not like, you could have a big liability that's not on financial statements, that could be concerning to someone.
That's what I was.
This group moves that down, so that's much better, if you're a banker, uh you're gonna.
Is this report in its entirety available to the public based on your?
Everything, everything is public information, so yeah, somebody came in and said, I wanna see your financial statements, we would give it to them.
Right.
We give it to the bank every year, they actually sent me an email, you know, about three weeks ago saying, you know, I didn't have your financial statements, but I think because of our workage twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty, so I gave them all the ones they didn't have, and then once we approved this, I'll upload it.
Well, it's not available, oh, you don't have to give that as the management, so that's why it's not bound in here, this is just beginning.
So. For this year's budget, which probably is starting, we'll be starting soon. Um are there any um recommendations? I mean, you can't, I mean, I look at this and it's great to see, okay, yeah, we, you know. We were under for retirement, but we can't, you know, we still have to budget as for retirement.
Oh, absolutely.
So in many ways, her budget is gonna still have the same, basically be done the same way.
Oh, yeah, no, I wouldn't suggest that you change anything else, I mean, even things like, like the health insurance, you always wanna budget as if somebody that doesn't have it may opt for it, right? So that creates kind of a little fluff in the budget, so to speak.
And I've been treasurer in the past, and so I've seen this reserve at the end of the year, a few hundred thousand. So it's kind of about to be, I will say, um. I mean, should we be, I mean, we kind of congratulate ourselves when we're under budget, and that's what I do at Harvard, it's not congratulating myself on what I'm doing with budget. But in this case, we really shouldn't be, we should be kind of as close to budget as possible.
Would, would you wanna look at as that profit that you had, but also in comparison to your previous profits, right? So there are some libraries that have absolutely no money. Um and then, you know, they have a real problem because costs are going up fast, and then the tax gap is going up. And they wanna go up, well, we need to raise the budget to six percent, and then what if it fails? And if it fails, now you're really in trouble. So for those libraries, they're exactly the opposite, you know, it's kind of the situation, and you're in a great spot.
No, I know we're in a great spot.
Money and worry about how to standard it. Um but yeah, I mean, the two hundred thousand dollar profit on top of what you already have is just adding more.
Yeah, I mean, we've had three hundred thousand more years, and I would like to count.
And I'm sure the public's happy with what they're getting, you know, I think.
Yeah, no, we always get support, and but, I mean, people love a library, and as well they should, I mean, it's a great place and.
But over the long term, isn't that just increasing our reserve?
Right, I mean, every year that you have a surplus, it increases.
And reserve is, and if we're supposed to have fifty percent as reserve, that's, we're increasing, we're, basically, we're creating our own problem here.
Yeah, it's a nice.
It's money as fast as I can have.
And I agree to that, and I also, as you probably have noticed, I will always encourage that going to the staff too. Because, I mean, keeping our, keeping a good staff here is hard, and so.
So that's always an important thing to keep in mind, is that you wanna keep good staff, you have to encourage that.
We have very good staff right now.
But, you know, there is no parking here. So like, if a building became available that was like next door, I would think you wanna have cash. I mean, I would probably commit money, put it in the capital fund. And then, I don't wanna say it's a way of hiding, like, you may not use that for twenty years or any of, but when that opportunity does arise, you probably wanna jump on it, you know? And to be able to have the cash, that would be a nice thing.
I have a question, when you said the guidelines you were admission, when I first came in, it had to do with the uh the amount that is suggested that you would have within, you know, as a reserve. Now, this fifty percent figure?
It's, it's.
But that within the gen, within the general fund, general operating fund. In other words, like, I'm just curious, if we, if we start to talk about setting up a capital fund. We wanna make sure that we leave in a, in the, in a general fund enough money to cover operations plus the reserve. So how do we get that magic number, I mean?
Well, and there is, there is no magic number, usually libraries look at how soon they get their tax dollars, so like I said, if the library doesn't get their tax money until six months. They need a minimum of six months worth of their budget, because they gotta be payable until they get taxes. You get your taxes in February, and a big part of it, so you really don't have to float that much. So that's an argument to have less, you know, so maybe five months is your number. It should be something that you can defend if somebody asks why, you know, uh maybe three months is enough. You know, um but again, you have to look at that in comparison to what you're trying to accomplish, what your five and your plan is.
Or you're trying to keep the amount in the operations of basically the budget money, so the tax revenue you come, comes in and that goes into operations. And then if at the end of the year, you have a profit, I don't, I don't like profit, but the reserve was a surplus of two, uh two hundred thousand. Then um January, you move that two hundred thousand to capital, and then just keep the amount that you get. So your operating expenses come.
We need to do the same thing with, with major uh major gifts too, it seems to me, and that's one, another thing we've talked about. A thing that happened last year, and it's hopefully will happen even more so this year, is that if you have a large capital gift. Uh and you have established a separate capital fund. Um then you could put that, those funds directly into your capital fund rather than into your general.
It depends, it depends what they give it for, and you can, one of the things that you're allowed to have is an endowment fund, that's another thought. So you can have a third column, but when people give you money, and it has to stay in perpetuity. So if somebody says, oh, he gives two hundred thousand dollars, you can't spend the principal, you can spend the interest of the dividend, if you can't spend the principal, you would wanna put that in a third fund. So that's, and that gets money out of the general fund as too, if that, a place for that would not be the capital fund, it'd be the endowment.
Right.
That's, that would also get it out of the general.
But then somebody would have had, would somebody have to restrict it to an endowment fund when they give it to you?
Generally, that's the way it's supposed to work, I mean, if you want, see, the one benefit that you have is that you are not a school district library, right? So if you were a school district library and you created a capital fund, that you put five hundred thousand dollars there, or two million dollars there, didn't use it. You'd get a phone call from New York State saying, because you have to report to New York State, we send annual reports into the state for the school district libraries. Um what project do you have? Uh we don't have a project in mind, close it down, move it back to the general fund. They want the general, they want the public to see and put pressure on it, you know, you're not gonna get that. So there's no problem with you creating a capital fund and moving it over there, but if you don't do anything with the money for twenty years, some people are gonna stop if they like, you know.
I don't think that could be endowment though, if somebody was giving money, the way I understand endowments is, you know, people say, I want to give an endowment to the library, and then, so if somebody just came off the street and said, I wanna give you fifty thousand dollars, we could not turn that into an endowment. Or if they wanted to give us five million dollars, we could not turn that into an endowment.
You could probably make a decision to do that.
Without, without their acknowledging it as an endowment?
Right, in other words, if they're either gonna give it to you with strings or without, right? If they give it to you without strings, then it's up to you to decide what you want to do. All right, I wouldn't as a board make a decision that it should be held in perpetuity. You would wanna just fund it and place it there, it would sit there unrestricted.
Right.
And, you know, in case you ever needed it, you, you know, you, you know, you'd have access to it, but you could probably.
And we're setting up a scholarship uh fund, and that would be an endowment. Um is that assumed when a, when a donor gives something to us that it would go in there as an endowment?
If, if they're telling you it's an endowment, yes, if they're saying, you know, if you're running your scholarship program through the endowment fund, and they're giving money to a scholarship, yes.
Okay.
But it's, it's, you wanna try to, it's nice when people give you an endowment, but it kind of stinks when you have it. You don't wanna tie your hands if you don't have to, right? So, you know, you don't wanna talk them into, you know, putting strings on it.
I mean, the hard thing, endowments sound lovely until they're not, until the principal is not producing enough interest for you to do what you wanna do.
Funding me, right.
Until it's not, was gifted in nineteen-ten, it is no longer covering the entire operations of the library.
Yeah, that, that endowment.
Yeah, I mean, we do have an endowment fund, it's actually not designated as such.
Yeah.
That's the one seventy-five, right? That's an endowment, that's restricted in perpetuity, right?
So if you want to, you know, if you wanted to create an endowment fund, the board would make a motion not to get moved over that out of the fund. Wanda's gonna have a lot more work, because every one of those funds creates another company in quickBooks. Right, so it's got its own warrant, its own, you know, balance sheet, its own statement, it's all like checking account, whatever.
So really, just to go back to that scholarship question, again, you know, if, if the donor says it's an endowment, you would award it off the interest, then, then that's what it is. But if the he were to say, here's a big pot of money, fund the scholarship out of that, that's really.
Would probably be the way most would do it, yeah, okay, so it could be a mixture of the two in the scholarship fund.
When somebody gives an endowment, typically that implies you can't touch the principal, that's only the interest. But if they give you fifty thousand for scholarship, now you can use that actual principal.
To give us a commission.
Yeah, that's better than.
Well, yes and no, it's better in short term, and then the principal's gone and you're.
Right, well, let's look at.
I don't.
Yes, okay.
Um so as far as the recommendation, any other questions?
No, it's excellent, thank you.
Thank you, um so as far as the recommendations go. Before I start, you know, there's gonna be a lot of things in here that this deals with your internal control, and our concern is how can we we get to make it more, or I would say, less likely that someone could make the mistake and it wouldn't be found. Or less likely that somebody could steal money, that's really the purpose of why we're making good recommendations. But I don't want you to think in any way, shape, or form that we found anybody, any money, that's not what we found, so everybody did a great job. Um these are uh, you know, to cover a hole where somebody possibly could take. And that's the point of them, they're recommendations, you don't have to follow them. You got the best financial statement that you could get, this is just about lowering your risk, okay? Um the bottom of the first page, our first recommendation is kind of embarrassing, and this is more of a disclosure that we have to give you, okay? It says that there's a lack of separation of duties over the financial reporting process. What that means is that you don't have anybody on staff that is capable of doing a financial statement like we do it. So there's a chance we could make a mistake and you wouldn't find it. That's what that means, so it's embarrassing, but we have to let you know that, because the rules are the same. If, if you walked into Exxon, they, for their audit, they prepare the financial statement, or they just come in and check it. So there's a separation of duty. Here, I have to let you know that I did your audit and I prepared it if I can, okay, so that's interesting. Okay, so you're always gonna have that, that's that. On number two, uh next page, there's a lack of separation of duty between many of the functions within the endowment fund. The assistant director, the custodian of the blank checks, can sign the check, reconciles the bank accounts, maintains the general ledger. Furthermore, the director has the ability to approve mid-month invoices to be paid, and is authorized signer as well. This provides the board little assurance that all payments have been made properly and that there are no unauthorized payments made. Therefore, we recommend following a term, control design change considered. So having said that, really what it means is that, you know, you have, your assistant director does everything financially. Not that she ever would, not that we suspect, or, you know, we found anything, but if she wanted to, she could take the check out of the bottom of the drawer. Make it payable to herself, sign it, and you would have no idea, okay? She took a check from the bottom of the drawer, it's not gonna go on your pay bill schedule, no, nobody would even know, she does the bank reconciliation, you know. So it would be very easy for her to take money, okay? Um she didn't, but that's a kinschner, if you really want, when you're awarded, you have fiduciary responsibility to buy your broad money. And you're only here for a couple hours a month, the best way to do is to make sure you guys have the check signers, right? You always wanna separate the person with the checks from the ability to sign the checks. If your assistant director can print checks all day long, but if she can't sign them, they're no good to her, right? And if she does fraudulently sign, well, you'll get the money back from the bank, that's their problem, not your problem. But if she's the signer, you know, it's a problem, so the person with the check should never be the check signer, that goes for any business, any not-for-profit, any government. Okay, and the same thing goes, your director has access to checks if she wanted to have them as well.
So typically, what is done?
Typically, you have the treasurer who's a check signer, who in, in school district libraries, it's not a board position, it's definitely a higher position. But in this case, it would be your treasurer and another board member, in the ideal world. If you require two signatures on every check, well, then it doesn't really make a difference if your director is a check signer, because we know we're getting at least one of the signature. So I would have either the, the treasurer signature only check, you know, be a check signer. Or require, if you wanted to keep, you know, your director on as a check signer, then you have to have one of you guys.
In addition.
In addition. But it shouldn't be the person with the checks.
Which one do you recommend?
I recommend that both staff come up it, and that, you know, the board sign it. So typically, you could have the treasurer sign all checks, and then you could require a second signature on a check over a certain amount of money, not to drive you all crazy. But that's up to you, it's, it's your decision, you don't have to change any of this, but it's just my job to let you know where the risks are.
I was thinking of that, uh what would the amount be?
You want it to be a certain amount of money that um is large enough that it doesn't drive you crazy, and small enough that you don't care, you know? I would, I would probably look at one of your biggest bills, if your health insurance is ten thousand a month. Uh I'd probably make it like ten for eleven thousand, you know, something like that.
Like ten thousand a month, that's adorable, for health insurance. But we just heard forty, I think forty's a buck.
All right, so then look at your next level, and then maybe you're only coming in to sign, you know, one, one check a month, kind of like, you know, the health insurance. So.
So everything under forty could still be signed by staff?
Well, uh maybe I'd make it ten thousand, right, make it a ten thousand dollar limit, so you're only, not by staff, I mean, in an ideal world, it's the treasurer signs everything.
Right.
And then over ten thousand, which is probably only gonna be then one bill a month, you know, you get a second signature at the night of the board meeting.
We currently require two signatures, it's usually, um if it's something mid-month, it's, it'll, it'll be like Wanda and I, and generally, that's like if the principal bill comes in, the long-term disability life insurance, which always comes in exactly three days before it's due. We'll print it, sign it, and send it off, but um. We'll print it, sign it, and send it off, but, um. Elliot's retired and lives really close by, so it's easier to, like, we can call him up and have him run down and sign that, we promise not to do it.
I know, but it's not, we're not just thinking about with Elliot, we're thinking about the whole future, everything, everyone on the future.
Yeah, so, I mean, what? We require two signatures now. If that signature is me and Elliot, that's basically the same as just having Elliot sign all the checks, or whoever the treasurer has signed all the checks. Or we would, in Bridgehampton, it was a one signature, and it was either the treasurer or the board president. And I would say that there were years where that was really easy, because that person could come in, you know, by virtue of their schedule. And then there were times when we paid the late, bill late, because we saw that person once a month, so it's, it's sort of boils down to. If it's gonna be two board members who are signing the checks, that those two board members who hold those positions. Be available when, you know.
And that, that's what it comes down to, you know, if you guys can be available, that, that's, that's. So school district libraries, all of them, federal school district libraries are not allowed to release a payment until the invoice gets approved by the board. So typically what happens, this is the payment act, so board members come in, have to look at the invoices, and then sign the checks at that moment, they all go. Good paid once a month, things that are paid in between months only can be payroll. And those are usually signed by the payroll company, they come up standard big. So only payroll and payroll-related items can be paid mid-month, everything else has to wait for the board meeting to be paid.
So the payroll companies are, um, withdrawing money directly from the bank accounts, so there are no checks.
Well, then, right, well then.
So in sum, what you're saying is definitely get away from what we're doing now. Have two non-staff, or at least one non-staff member. Act as a signer.
Basically get Wanda off the bank account.
Take Wanda, walk in there.
The nice thing calling you guys. It's like that.
But, mo, there could be multiple board members as signers, you know, you can have, it doesn't have to be one, I mean, if one person is sick or, you know, away on vacation, it should be two.
There should be a failsafe mechanism, so that if one isn't available, then. I would, I would think it should be treasurer and.
I believe this year, we actually left Bill on the bank account as president for that specific reason. If, by any chance.
And that could come down, pretty flexible.
Yeah, Elliot, um, you know.
Well, that, that allows Elliot, he has, he goes away on vacation.
Yeah, but then, but then, so is that a two-person signing with you, with Kelly signing and. And either the board president or the treasurer, or is it, or do we go to a one-person signing where either, either the board president or the treasurer signs? I mean.
Yes, I know.
I mean, it's, it's the same logistical problem either way. Um.
But I, I think it's, oh. It's my understanding, um, and I was not here, so correct me if I'm wrong, the whole reason Wanda ended up on the bank account in the first place was COVID. And paying, right, paying bills.
Yeah.
During.
All right, but we don't have COVID now.
But we don't have COVID now, so there's, there's no reason for us to continue to be. Signing bills, that's why I also reintroduced us having a warrant that was approved at the board meeting, because I just felt like we shouldn't be signing all the checks and.
But that's good, it's about the spender's approach, which is probably a good practice anyway.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering if we took Kelly and Wanda, both of them off of the bank account, then we could have. If we could have three signature, signatories, still only needing one or two, we could have the president, the vice president, and the treasurer. As a failsafe for people being out of town, or somebody not being able to get there. When a bill needs to go out, it kind of gives you, it gives you one more name.
Your opinion now.
Yeah, no, I mean, the more the merrier in terms of.
Yeah, in, in terms of, I mean, one of our jobs as the board is that if the. If the money disappears from the library, we become financially responsible for it, so. Yeah, it's, it's in our best interest to keep the money out.
So I shouldn't tell you if we get sued, that's me personally who.
No, but this is an important point there.
Yeah, no, it is an important.
I wouldn't be glad to decide to fix it, but it shouldn't just be Kelly alone, right, it shouldn't be sent, so. However you wanna do it, I think, it, maybe you'll, you'll do it, and it'll be hard, you'll have to add somebody else.
Alright, well, rather than taking your time on it, we'll, we'll.
Finance meeting.
Yep.
You wanna do it in finance meeting or somewhere else? But that's one of. Yeah, we have a lot of things to talk about. You understand what the central group is, yeah, I think we know what our options are, and we'll come back to everybody in June. Let's say, this is what we'd like to do, if everybody agreed, and then, then it'll be done.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. On several issues, yeah.
Okay. We made it to three now.
Third bullet, no, so that's. The other thing was that, um. Yeah, so also when it comes, uh, let's see what we got here, um, the bank reconciliations, right, are prepared by the assistant director, and nobody is looking at those, right? So they should be reviewed by somebody, typically it's the director or the treasurer. Um, so you guys decide what you wanna do with that.
Started doing that, right? We already do, we started doing it.
Yeah.
We knew it was coming, so we just.
Yeah, but those signed off?
They should, right, so it's very important, like, lots of times when we come into someplace and it's like, oh, we do that. But from the auditor's perspective, we always like to see initials on things, because as I'm going through the bank statements. If I see one that doesn't have initials, then I say, oh, why wasn't that revealed, oh, maybe that person was on vacation, let me check that out, you know? So it gives me something to notice, so it's, and it also forces you to take responsibility, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's important. Okay, um, number three, many of the invoice packets related to the purchase of library materials did not have receiving documentation attached. We recommend that in the future, all receiving information be attached to the invoice packets to indicate that the goods being paid will have been received.
Does that mean you need a signature, make the delivery, there's somebody that signs off on it?
So this was mostly just so you all know, um, books. Um, it was mostly our Baker and Taylor invoices, and, um. We had them, a staff member actually, um, had a giant stack of folder, and was like, oh, I keep these every year, and then at the end of the year, I throw them out, and I was like, okay, well. You can't have them anymore, they're mine, so I could attach them to the, so we started doing that as well, okay?
Right, it's important when, you know, the assistant director goes to pay a bill. You wanna make sure you got what you paid for. The receiving document says, oh, this stuff came in, because there are book companies. Well, there are people who will send bills to common scam, right, that, and right now, not that your assistant director would ever do that, but she could take an invoice. Make one up for her own company, her husband's, whoever's company, bring it in and just pay it. But she can't pay it, you know, if, if there needs to be a packing slip attached, that's a whole nother document that somebody else here at the library would have to see the goods.
So I'm paying things in advance?
You do, but you, but if they don't, so you order books, and if, it's saved.
We order, so we order books, right, so, and we order them months and months in advance, so like, we. Order all the hot summer blockbusters now, but they don't come in the mail until July or whatever, right? We don't get invoiced for them until the book has arrived.
Ah, okay.
So what I have is I have a folder of packing slips and a folder of invoices, and every month. I do my best to ignore them until I have to do a warrant of checks, because I hate it, and I marry all of those. And then I code them, and I hand them to the log.
So pay, we never pay for the.
We never do.
Very good.
Yeah, and the other.
You haven't received the goods, right?
But we, and that's what packing slips is.
I was at a board meeting, I was in a Zoom meeting about a month ago, maybe two months ago now. And, uh, with the library upstate, and they said, Al, what are we doing to make sure that we don't have a marionette situation? I said, what happened in the marionette, I didn't, I, I know the gossip on the now, I know those gossip, you know, up there. Well, there was the bookkeeper, and they think, and I, I read the article, I Googled it afterwards, they think they may have stolen up to a million dollars, and the library doesn't have enough money to pay payroll, so they make a lot of business. They don't have one day, they're. Um, the bookkeeper created phony companies. She was in it, you heard about that?
I think so.
And then she was just writing che. Only book company, write the check, send it out, never got the goods, no, so they said, how, how can we prevent that from happening, as that there should have been a packing slip attached. Signed by, you don't want the person who ordered the books, it needs to be somebody independent, right, so somebody in tech services, or somebody needs to be. Given the responsibility to sign the packing slip, so they're verifying that the goods came in, because the bookkeeper could have brought her chrome packs.
Right, yeah.
Right, you need the initial from somebody else, and the same thing here, it's not just that it's attached, it needs to be initialed by somebody that said, yeah, I saw three volumes, I saw, you know. Ten packs of pens, whatever.
Especially when orders get broken up, and they send.
Yeah, right.
Ten books in one box, and then the next.
And that's where they have to get matched up to the invoices, and then they're really, right, so that's. Um, number four, during our review of your payroll procedures, we noted that the board is not formally approving a detailed payroll warrant. The warrant would provide the board with a tool to verify the salary rates have not changed, the vicious employees have not been put on the payroll. The body employees have been removed from the payroll, and hours worked appear reasonable. To assist in this process, we'd recommend that the board approve a salary schedule each year that identifies each employee and their rate of pay. We'd also recommend that the new hires, the new, uh, hires rate of pay be included in the personnel section of monthly minutes.
They start doing that.
So we spend. We spend a lot of time looking at the regular warrant. Payroll is probably seventy-five percent of the money we spend. The money that, we're focusing on all the other stuff, that's only twenty-five percent of it, so. Usually when money gets taken from a library, it's usually through the payroll, either the person who's putting in the payroll puts in more hours for themselves, or their friends, or they change the rates of pay. Right, so. School district libraries are required to look at a payroll warrant, and that's basically the payroll register. And they have to do what it, you know, before it goes out, so there could be one person, you could look at. Somebody takes the responsibility and not look at everybody, maybe look at the first five people, and the next month, look at the next five people, so at least you get through everybody once. But you wanna have a s- a salary schedule in the beginning of the year that says everybody's name, what their rate of pay is, just make sure it doesn't change during. And then when people get fired, like, or, you know, get terminated or separated from service, and just spend the minutes, make sure they got taken off the direct pay. I have lots of people who get direct deposit, and they kept getting paid after they got let go, you know? Like, that's your responsibility to protect those kind of things, so. But again, you do, you do without what you want, you want to delegate it to one person, but somebody should be checking it. And number five, currently no one reviews the payroll register and comes back from the payroll company, although it is good that the treasurer reviews the payroll at the end of the month. We recommend that the bi-weekly payroll be approved by the director promptly after it's been processed, and then initialed to their approval.
Which I think we started doing? I don't know, I initial everything, that's, Wanda just answered me things, and I. No, it's not, I beat all of that.
Yeah.
Library, she reads everything.
I beat everything.
Um, number six, currently timekeeping is maintained electronically by each staff member who logs into the payroll company's website to record their time. We know that this is often done at the end of the week, the employee has the ability to record their time from anywhere and at any times. They, uh, do not need to be present in the library. We recommend that the library migrate to a hand scan or a minimum, the employee will be required to sign in from within the library. So you don't want John signing in from home at nine o'clock, then he's here, and then he goes up.
We don't even do that, I mean, like.
No, nobody signs in till the end of the week.
Nobody, nobody signs until the end of the week, and then populates it for, for the whole week. I love a hand scan, I love nothing for that.
How about a red screen?
I will scan. I mean, it could just.
My voice is. Do they sell them, that you put, you put a code in?
Yeah.
Then you put your finger in, and then.
ADP, ADP will sell us one.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, well, good, and then.
And it's, and it's, uh.
So everyone's sticking a dirty finger on this.
On the same thing, yeah.
What happened at Bridgehampton School, everybody punches everything, punches out?
We actually, um, that, they have the finger scan in. Bridgehampton, and when COVID happened, we moved to swipe cards, because it was actually finger scan or swipe card. Um, so everybody had a card that they swiped, which actually worked out better, because some of our staff members, um, clearly, um. You know, were in the mob, because they didn't have fingerprints and their fingers went, you know? So, um, yeah. So we, that's, and it's not, I don't remember being in huge stuff, so it was really negligible.
It, it's probably gonna be a little, I mean, right now, everybody just. Does what they do, and it probably works perfect for, you know, Wanda, because everything matches.
Right, so.
As soon as you're required to do this, then somebody's gonna forget to sign in, somebody may come in late, you know, that's what we're trying to catch, we're not paying for the time that they're here, but when they forget to check in, forget to check out. Then that requires a little bit more time, not always. No, it's, it's the right thing to do. The right.
But.
Well, and it will be for the staff, it takes less time than coming to the end of the week and populating.
And then having to remember, oh, I was off, oh, there was an accident on twenty-seven, like, evening late, so I got.
It makes for more accurate records and accountability, and that's what you need.
It's good, yeah.
It's fun.
Number seven, currently, as the assistant director is doing the timesheets, if something looks open, it's being corrected, the director final. Provides final approval, however, this approval is usually granted verbally and is not documented, we recommend that the director sign off on the timesheet in question. Whether in a minimum, the approval via email. So it's, it's one object. Um, number eight, there is a lack of separation of duties over the cash and seed process, currently, the assistant director receives all the cash and checks. Then a collector, she prepares the deposit ticket, makes a deposit ticket, maintains the accounting records. Recommend that the director or another staff member be responsible for receiving the checks, immediately stamping them with a deposit only. Making photocopies of them and preparing a deposit ticket, then a different staff member be assigned the responsibility to make a deposit.
Okay, I got a question, why aren't you depositing by, um, electronically and just taking photo of the chat and going straight to the bank?
Well, they, they get cash too, so they probably have to go to the bank anyway.
Yes, that's, that would be the.
But it is, but, I mean, I went from deposit tickets to the. Online taking pictures, and the best thing about it is that when I go to my bank account, and I'm trying to figure out who the seven hundred and twenty. Six dollars and twelve cents, which is a very common check for me, who it came from, I'm gonna get a picture of the check.
Yeah.
Whereas with the deposit slip, you don't.
I mean, if you have.
But then again, you photocopied everything.
Yeah. Um, we've, just so you know, we've already started to create a chance to take care of the, the cash deposits, and. I open all the mail, so I'm gonna open all the checks.
How much can I show you?
Like, seven dollars. And it, and it's mostly a hex, yeah, no, um.
What is that, mostly like the copy machine?
Yeah. Ten cents here, ten cents there, like, if we bring in seven dollars in a day, it's been a big debt. You get a copy of the library.
Alright, cool.
Um, number one, on the significant deficiency, uh, staff that purchase certain material do not always separate who receive the item. So that's what goes back to that packing slip, we just wanna make sure that the people who purchase are different than the people who say, here, we got it. And then just a couple of other items that we just noticed, uh, currently, the director and assistant director have access to the QuickBooks accounting software, they both use the same password. Recommend that they be assigned their own password, and then in order trail, there's a feature within QuickBooks that says. You know, it's called the order trail, and you can tell who did what, so somebody can't let else.
So I had a question about that, so if the director and the assistant director have different passwords. And something would happen to one of them. How, how do you, like? You, I guess it's a matter of.
It doesn't, because the other one will have the password.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and one should be the administrator, so the administrator has the ability to grant other people, take other people home to the book.
And, and both you shouldn't know each other's passwords, obviously.
Yeah, right.
Cause then that defeats that.
We should make our passwords for everything in the building the same time. J J M L.
No, J J M L, one exclamation point.
Just pass one to her.
Um, number two, it's our understanding that the treasurer gives a detailed review of the paid bills each month. Which is an integral part of the internal control, we would encourage the entire board to pull strength, further strengthen its internal control by reviewing them. Um, like the school districts do, but at a minimum, we'd recommend that the invoices be present at the board meeting, should any board members have any questions or decide to view them. So.
There they are.
That's what they do. That's it. There are some, I mean, I, I clearly sense it's not the case here, but. Um, you'd be amazed at some of the other board members, you know, board meetings that I go to, how strong some of the board members' personalities are. And everybody else is just like a sheep, just like afraid to look up or do anything or say anything. So it's part of my role to make sure you understand you have the ability and the right, should be looking at the invoice if you want to see them. Or if you see something, right, you all have the power. Number three, since the library has the majority of its money in one bank, it may consider opening. Another account in another bank just to help it, to provide some of its cash in the event of an unforeseen event. I did have a number of clients who had Signature Bank and.
So uh, if the capital fund went to a different bank, that would cover.
Great, thanks a lot, Al.
Do they normally clap for you?
Sometimes. Al, you've earned the right to come back.
Our guest, Donnie Carson Scott.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Put up the bag of peanuts.
Alright, thank you.
You guys have a good night.
If we uh, this might build it, we might, the finance committee might want to. Privately at some point, are generally available a couple weeks?
Yeah, you'll, you'll let me know. Um, sometimes I'm, I'm out here often enough, so if I'm out here, we can work something out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Wanda, can you show outdoor? Normally you can go out that way, but because we record the meetings, shades have to close, otherwise the light.
It's looking out there, that way.
That way, actually, it's dark enough now, we couldn't put the sheds up down.
Okay, well, that was really good time, well, we spent. Um, although we're running very late. Um, approval of uh April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
I'll make that in my motion.
Oh wait, do we need to approve the audit?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, we do. Okay.
Well, you can approve the minutes and then just back up to the audit. So finish the eight minutes and then go back.
Okay, all four, approving the. Okay, approval of the two thousand twenty-two audit as prepared by Valdezary and Costa.
I will second it.
All four. Okay, passes. Okay, um, report from the Friends of the Library.
Yeah, if you have not purchased your tickets for the afternoon at Aaron's Cove on Sunday. Um, please make sure you go to their event, right, and you purchase them. It can be a great event. I hear there's going to be lots of yummy food. Um, and I was told I may speak briefly, so that is what I shall. Um, possibly with my. And uh, what else from the Friends? Oh, the um. The Friends um have decided in, in, at the request. Of um. Mary Ann Bennett's mother um to, well, let me back this up. Mary, as you know, Mary Ann Bennett passed away. Um, the Friends wanted to do something for her. Um, they, you know, were like, maybe we'll do books, maybe we'll do something else. In the meantime. Mary Ann Bennett's mother, Mary Bennett, had come in. She said, I'd like to give you some money to plant something that they don't need to plant. I just wanna drive by and see something growing. And I thought, we can do that and we can also float that by the friends as something that they can do. So as you know, we planted clover um on the other side of the building. We have clover here, we have these little uh Dr. Sues, Sues pup balls that pop up. So um, I told the Friends, we'd like to plant more pup balls on the other side so they match, and so that is what the Friends are going to do. So um, they're gonna plant some of the pup balls.
It's not weeds.
It's not weeds. They're, 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 what are they called? They're, they're called plants of deerjodik. And that's what we're planting. Um, so. Uh, that's, I think. Everything with regards to the report of the Friends, uh, obviously.
Have they met since?
They, they have. That's when they sort of made that decision about what they wanted to do for Mary Ann Bennett. They're trying to figure out what it is that they want to do for Gloria. I know that's. You know, sort of the conversation we can have at the end. Maybe it's something that the Friends can also. Sort of fund, um, and then we'll just, we'll just see. They're really. Hyper-focused on this Sunday's event and selling those tickets, um, which are a hundred dollars. Okay. I, nice tickets, kids. I don't have to. I start, I go to the Friends meetings. If somebody else want, is going to go to Friends meetings. And wants to give that report. I can continue to give.
I think Kathy used to give the Friends report.
Alright, then I'm happy to do it.
Well, would it be good sometimes that, so we come in and give it?
We could.
Yeah.
I mean, I doubt she would do it. That's, that was why Kathy started giving the Friends a report with, because the Friends didn't wanna come to the meeting.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, every so often. It might get them a little bit more involved with the board.
Yeah, no, it depends on who's the president of the Friends.
I think, I think the Friends are their, their unseverate five oh one C three, whose only purpose is to raise money for us. And um. Let us do what we want.
And different presidents have different.
Yes, so I, I think it's okay for me to give.
Elliot, Treasury's report.
Okay, I'll try to think of this story. Uh, okay, financial position is excellent, as we know. Uh, cash and current term end of the month was five million, seven eighty-one, one oh four. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars better than it was at the same point in April of twenty-two. And another, uh, and it was, and it's roughly four hundred thousand dollars more than it was at the close of April of twenty twenty-one. So it's going in the right direction. Mortgage balance is down, almost down to five million, five million, one eighty, two, two, five, nine. Down in five, eight, one, eight, one fifty a year ago. So that's continuing to look good. Remembering that the mortgage is going to finally be paid on September thirty-first of twenty twenty-nine. Now, in terms of revenue for the month of April, there wasn't much to speak of. Uh, and there usually is not in April because we generally don't receive tax funds in that month, the fourth month. So the revenue for last month was only seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. That's a lot better than it was last year when it's only under five thousand dollars. So, and the difference between those two. Is largely due to the uh. In, income from the invested TVL funds. So again, it's just, it's another example of, of how healthy that, of how, what an important component that is coming. Uh, that in a month with little income, we have a nice chunk of money coming from the TVLs. Which is earned income, importantly. Um, April expenses were a lot more than they were last year, by about fifty thousand dollars. It looks like most of it was due to personnel. That we were understaffed in April twenty-two, or that we were down in terms of number of people working or, you know, time on the clock, so. Uh, that accounts for most of it. Um, the other part of it, about thirty percent of the, of the overage this year in April. Comes from buildings and ground, which again, we expect. This is what we're seeing. We're gonna keep seeing it through the end of the year. Um. That's about all I can say on that. On year-to-date, revenue and expenses versus the annual budget. Um. No, we're at a third, cause it's four months, so a third of the year, so roughly thirty-three percent we would expect to, to have spent. And in most areas, uh, that's roughly what we spent or we spent less. Um. The uh. Here we go. Oh, I'm sorry, it's just started with revenue. The revenue. Is, is almost always higher at this point, and this year it's true. We were at uh. Uh, fifty-eight percent of our target for revenue by the end of April. Last year, we were roughly the same, sixty-two percent. This is always gonna be true, uh, and so it's not really anything to focus on. Expenses. Now, the expenses uh were within the hundred, with one-third parameter, with thirty point nine percent. Of the budget we have spent, um, taking everything into account. Last year was very similar, twenty-nine point one. So, you know, I think the stability here is, is important. Again, with a lot of the additional expenses we're facing this year. Uh, we're still looking pretty good because we're, we're relatively stable in terms of what we're spending. Overall, um, and then in terms of my notes, the only one I really think we should look at is just the B and B. B and G, as expected, is high. We've spent, the third of the year, we spent half of the year's money. But that's what we expected and we're gonna keep seeing that, but I still think that the total amount is, is not too bad and. I think we're gonna be able to cover it uh with your inter-departmental transportation.
The reserve. I like when he keeps looking at me.
That would be me, I was.
No, no, but I was, but we got, like, I'm the one who's buying this stuff.
Yeah, you weren't there.
Every, all the other variances are the type of thing where we've already paid for it, digital books, whatever. Yes, there are cases where we. We're showing that we've spent a lot of our money. These are, tend to be in cases where we've already paid for it. So it's not an issue. Um, you're gonna see the uh warrant here, which is, if you wanna go over the details, you're welcome to it. Um, uh, unpaid bills of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and twelve cents.
And it's, it's low, this is new information. It's low because we just got the health insurance bill. Um, which is in that pile of prepaid.
Yeah.
Our forty thousand dollar health insurance bill.
Yeah, but anyway, the size of the warrant itself is certainly not of concern and the fact that it's, it's. It's, it's lower than it ought to be, but. I still think that it looks to me like everything. Is reasonable based on what, where we are in the year. There's two payrolls in April and you've got the details here and they're both in that mid-forties range. Everything looks very regular. Uh, we're basically fully staffed. And the uh, the reports look very regular, you know, for the month, so that's good. And you know, I think Al mentioned a statistic. I think, I think we're about half of our expenses are personnel. In our operation.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's, that, that's one of the things that, that keeps this stable because as long as the personnel. Is still, is performing in a stable manner, which it tends to do, you know, month by month. And then, you know, the, the overall budget is pretty stable because that's half of what we're spending. Uh, so we keep a close eye on it, but you know, so far, so good. Any questions anybody had? One thing I wanted to say um is that, uh, I know we have already approved the audit. But if you have questions or concerns about it, like, you know, tomorrow, if you're probably reading or anything like that. Give me a call or send me a text. Because we are, the committee's gonna meet and we're gonna go back to Al. Because we're gonna have questions after the fact. Well, wait a minute, what about this? So if you have thoughts about anything like that, just please just shoot them to me, you know? And hopefully we can integrate whatever your questions are when you talk to Al and when we make our own, you know, discussion.
We report that next month.
So that is something that commonly. All, like, that's common for libraries, is that the auditor will. Can certainly present to just the finance committee and the finance committee can make that recommendation, but a lot of libraries. Bring them out to do, you know, the dog and pony show, um, just because. It's, it's good to look at and if they have him, him explain it and everybody should sort of be on the same page because, yeah.
Fiscally responsible.
You're all, you're all fiscally responsible. Yeah, it's good. Um, and you know, I've always been a proponent of having your auditor. Speak to the board in its entirety.
No, I, I think we should do that. Can we have a motion to approve the Treasury's report and the um check warrant and payroll? We've been doing it. We've been doing it together.
Sorry, I apologize.
I will, like, I'm.
Michael. You step in and all in favor. For post. Motion carries.
Alright, Director's Report. Alright, y'all read my report. Any questions? Yeah, so, so, uh. You know, um. We've been busy. Um, we got the newsletter out to the printer yesterday, um, about. You know, an hour before I sent out the, the board package to all of you on Monday, so actually we got it out on Monday, right? Um, so that'll be in mailboxes by Memorial Day weekend. I am missing off the um cover. Cause I was bereaved, but the staff took a fabulous photo without my direction, um, and you're gonna love it. It's great. Um, they don't hate me. They're the stars of the show. Um, so we also have a very ambitious summer program series. Um, so, you know, once September comes, I'm gonna need a nap. Wanda's gonna need, we're all gonna need naps, um. But take two naps, uh, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, um, and the newsletter is a robust sixteen page. Instead of twelve. Yeah, I don't. July, I'm gonna regret my choices. Um, let's see. Ellie is straightening out all of our IT stuff. It's, I mean. Everybody's just so happy to have somebody addressing IT in the building every day, like things are just getting fixed.
Making a big difference.
It's, it's a huge difference. It's great.
She work on Mondays?
No.
I want to meet her.
Oh, you've never met Ellie?
No.
Stop it.
Not that I recall.
Alright.
So Dan is the person who knows every library, I like every staff member. By name and face. I knew them by face.
You still owe me a.
A lookbook. Bug shots, yeah.
Staff at the election yesterday, and I couldn't remember her name.
Okay. We can do that. Um, let's see. Interestingly enough, we have to give Vice President Garofio a shout out. Somebody actually contacted me and said. I'd like to put a legacy gift in my will and I wanna make sure I get it right. What am I supposed to bring to my estate planner slash lawyer? And I said, have this little printout. Let me send this along to you. Um, and I was in the middle of, of working on that page and my grandma, so.
Did she leave again?
She did not. So, yeah, she gave us.
There you go.
You are the indelible.
I am the indelible, um. Be- between, uh, between memorial services, um. Karina Reed, who's the director of the Levittown Public Library, and I spoke at the Long Island Library Conference. About issues of diversity, equity and inclusion and how to provide training for your, your staff. And, and trustees and be a more um diverse, equitable and inclusive institution. Uh, we also um submitted it to ALA's Public Library Association Conference, so maybe. Um, we'll be speaking nationally. And then um two, not one, but two John Tremaine Memorial Library staff members will be speaking at the Nyla Conference this year in Saratoga. Um, Emerging Technologies Library and Anthony Giassante will be presenting a program teaching tech for non-tech teachers. Say that three times fast, and uh, because I am the gift that keeps on giving, my program is Big Glitter. Big glitter, the glitter industry.
Oh, you're giving, oh.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about what the glitter industry can teach us about hatred privacy. Um, and that's, that's what a colleague of mine I went to college with who ended up becoming a librarian. Um, so we will be doing that. There will be lots of glitter. Uh, it's either going to be amazing. Or it'll be. They're gonna be like, why did all of the trustees go to Saratoga in November? There might be word.
Oh, by the way, sorry, I'll ask you. Oh, by the way, sorry, I'll ask you.
Okay. Um, Team Wagner Writing is gonna again continue through the summer months. They're enjoying the opportunity to work with Tyler Tyler Allen um in person, but those are longer. More intensive sessions. So we have a series, a short series during the summer. Um, we also have the team writing. Um, wrap up reception, which is gonna be the first week in June. Um, that we're working on invitations for now and we guys will also.
Is that that the same weekend?
I think it's a Tuesday, actually. Tyler Allen Penn. Yes. Yes. Um, let's see. I I was informal there. I just called him Tyler.
Okay.
Um, I just want to give a shout out to Emily. Our new sensory story time is getting really popular. Minecraft, which was a little slow to start because our computers were hot messes. They are no longer hot messes. Um, is packed and there's a waiting list everywhere.
What does it mean sensory story time?
Um, it's it's like.
You, they've got things to tie on while.
Yeah, so.
Like stuffed animal.
There's stuff. You hate topics for family. There's no.
We don't have a water table.
Um, we didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, always a yes. Um, we can do it outside and you can always put other things on the water table, like noodles or.
Other things.
Legos or or ice cleaners or. Um, Sam, not porn though, you'll get tiny little porn eyeballs. Learn that lesson in Bridget Hampton.
And not the, and it's not pipe cleaners that are going in.
Um, let's see. Um, the Graphic Novel Book Club at Kid Swid is getting pretty good attendance. The first time we met, it was, I think, all staff members, but the second time we met. It and one board member and I think the second time we met, it was.
Last week it was, I was the only like library.
You were the only library president. It was all.
Yeah, it was really, it was really, it was a really good one. It's very, it's fascinating.
Yes, uh, we we read George Kai's.
Yeah, book about the Japanese intern.
Well, he was interned actually.
Yeah.
It's a fascinating book. I'll let you do.
Um, also, um, you may see there's a tiny URL here about the friends party at Berens Cove. I hope to see you there on Sunday. I went to a billion skillion meetings. Um. We're cooking with gas. If you look at the stats, stats are good. We haven't done any TikToks lately, so our our TikTok numbers are are a little low. Um, but um, I mean, was was on vacation. Um, and then the personnel report is is public because there are no changes. And we do have that one vacant adult programming librarian question, which.
You received any listings or?
I have not posted for it and the reason I didn't post for it is. It's impossible to onboard somebody and we had to do the programming. It's just the wrong time of year to try and onboard somebody in that position.
What's a good time for? Okay, we need a motion to approve the personnel report. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Post. Motion carries. Okay, committee reports. Um, when I call uh the committee, if you could just tell me if you're planning on. Having a meeting this month. Cause we're all getting busy and I have to get everyone. That's the real reason. And I like piggybacking. Even three times would be good. So we'll start with Ann in personnel.
Uh, we did not meet and we have no plans to meet.
Okay. Uh, finance, Elliot?
We'll definitely meet soon.
Yes.
I mean.
Maybe after that we can get together and piggyback whoever.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, building grounds?
We did not meet and I don't really foresee any need to meet this month.
Okay.
You've done the hard, heavy lifting. Now it's a waiting game.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, policy, Diane has taken that over because.
Yeah, but I imagine after our um. We treat, it might be some long range.
Can we, because summer is is coming. Hard and fast and sixteen pages worth of programs, um, but also, um. All you all are impossible to schedule, sorry. Can we, it doesn't have to be tonight because I know it's getting late. But can we look at all our calendars in like September and sort of back in the sound of September? Um, because I think it's gonna be too hard to get us together during summer.
Yeah, so that's.
Uh, Michael with outreach.
Who I like to.
I've given everyone enough tasks.
Do you plan on meeting this?
No, we're never gonna meet again.
Okay, Diane Mash Park.
Mash met last Wednesday the tenth and to be perfectly honest, I'm not a baseball or softball person. I don't understand the difference in all the. Mount and everything. So while they talk ad nauseam about these kinds of fields, I'm just so down. So please forgive me, but they just give a lot. About the baseball and softball field and um. They're, they are finalizing their contract with the school district for using the park next year. They just have to. Create some wording with respect to two softball fields for the middle school. Um, and I have to say that was probably ninety percent of the meetings spent talking about that. Tennis is my thing. I'm happy to answer anybody's question, friend's. And tennis at the park has to be done. They play with the place, playing planets.
I seen they're doing pickleball over there too now, aren't they? Are they doing pickleball over there now?
Yes, on the hard courts up there, up top, yeah, they have, they can set up for pickleball. Yeah, pickleball is huge. And then um CPF is moving along. They've completed the appraisals and so it found its way.
So they're gonna get the the um. The development rights, they're gonna be able to sell sell their development rights for CPF.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's great.
That would be really wonderful. The contract for the Whalers Collegiate Baseball will be signed. Be signed by today and um. That's it. And I'm sorry to say, baseball and softball will never be my thing. They've got all the stuff going on all the time. Those fields, that's right. Come summer, come September, those. Yeah, oh, they're gonna have um the old school soccer in the fall. Okay.
Alright, Ed Hawk went for votes.
That's you.
We actually had a meeting where this. It was a very. Very productive. And one of the things that we discussed, maybe this was on this recommendation, was to. Do this in June of twenty twenty four. Then we looked at calendars and we settled on the first. Uh, Saturday in June, which I think is June eighth. And as a fallback, we'd be following the weekend, which would be June fifteenth, that Saturday.
So not during anything.
It's actually the second Saturday.
Second Saturday, sorry, second Saturday, correct.
So nothing in twenty twenty three at all?
Nothing.
Alright, that makes sense.
But one of the supporters of One For The Books happened to be there and she was all on board with this, so.
Right, that was in mind, yeah. So we discussed, and we we narrowed it down. We thought that we would target. Six different houses. We have those, but others in reserve. And we're each looking for uh not just local talent, but really big talent that could be available.
So we had basically a year and sort of recruit somebody else.
Right, exactly. Yeah, so that that's where that's where I just. Coalescing around that time, I think was good and was concerned that rightfully so, that if we were gonna do something that would. Involve an outside cocktail party type of thing, that whether in October or whatever, would you really?
It'll be nice.
Well, then you can have bigger rooms.
Yeah, yeah, and it's it's nice. It gives us a little bit more breathing and.
I have a question because I saw this. Park was gonna have this fundraising event and it ended up not having enough time. And then the next day I get an email that the. Historically, the scene was doing something the same night. So, and we talked about this last year. We're meeting about, you gotta find other. You know, friends out here who put on events, just let them know that you're doing this on a certain date. I don't have to change.
We've done that before. Um, we did that for One For The Books when I was. When we were doing the building project. Told absolutely everyone, we actually moved it once because Bay Street was gonna be having a fundraiser. And so we moved ours and two weeks after we set the date, told Bay Street, they moved theirs to one of our weekends.
I know, but it's no guarantee. There's no guarantee and there are overlaps now because everybody is doing events.
It's only eight weeks to really get it in.
Well, it's even longer, it's even more than eight weeks.
There's nothing that prevents us from putting it on our calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, get it, I would get it.
We can't, well, at least cancel, but but.
There's no reason not to do something because someone else is.
It's just good to know that, you know, you've got your data there and maybe. Maybe someone else will say, oh, the library's got something going, so maybe.
Yeah, so maybe the Chamber of Commerce have a master calendar or something.
In in the past, it's been more of the the organizations have talked.
When we met, and and you remember, I was speaking of dog and pony shows, I. Met with all the organizations and you know, we we sort of talked about, let's work together to make sure we don't overlap on events and stuff. I think the desire is there for us to do such things, but we all schedule things. At different intervals and so it makes it really hard. And then again, there's only eight weeks to do everything, so we, there there is sort of that issue of overlap. But we we kind of figure it out and work it out, you know what I mean? Like.
I mean, you can see if different organizations want to take part in a calendar thing. Where whoever gets there first is is at the top of that date.
Well, that's where we are now, right? So as far as that is concerned, now we know.
Yep. We can be sure the church will have something. I get there, you know, daily and they're like, yeah, she must, the brothers get it, right? Just get her this.
I didn't give them my email address.
It's just amazing that it's, I mean, it's great to see all those.
Okay, Ed Hawk Scholarship, we did meet on the twenty sixth.
Did.
Yes, we did.
So initially, so we did some research. I I had a conversation with Margaret Mato, who is Pearson.
Uh, College Placement Guidance Council, you know, I spoke to you, so we thought that. This scholarship would go to somebody who wants to go to a trade school, yeah, she goes, nobody does it really, do I get a student who does that? She goes, in fact. There are scholarships that go unawarded, simply, so. We, you know, we discussed that that's, you know, we're gonna eliminate that and open it up. It it'll be just based on financial need. If, you know, it's uh, on Sec Harbor resident, local resident, graduating high school. The platform could be adult in the community who wants to get additional education. It's gonna just have to be open and broad. And then we did access some um institutions that have, you know. Programs like like this one thing, looked at their uh parameters and new descriptions and their applications. So it's kind of giving us stuff to work with. Um, she did tell me also that uh, well, so um, the New York Civic Council. Grants five hundred dollars scholarship, seems to be a thousand, and it could be to anybody, not necessarily. High school bounds, uh, high school graduate onto college. It could be an adult in their community, community and um. Temple Adas, you know, see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Has a social justice scholarship. I don't know if it's a foundation, so they're, they have something going on. And um, so there there are things, wonderful opportunities out there, so we just have to um. Meet again and just maybe, maybe.
Can I ask a question? Is that when you say Sec Harbor resident, that'd be anybody who could really vote in the district?
Yeah, we were trying it to be a library district, so you have to be a Sec. Harbor library card holder, which means you're ultimately a resident of the district.
Oh, so just so really actually well.
Well, here's the topic, I think we talked about it, just because you could be a summer person, a part-time resident and still have a. Library card here. We want this to be a primary residence.
But we have the, but that is, that is information that we have.
I know, but you want to narrow it to registered voters?
No, you could be a, you could be a summer resident, be a registered voter. As long as you have property here, you can.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but that's okay.
Wait a minute, you can only vote one place.
Correct, but but if you, but you can, you can be a summer resident here and get absentee ballots. To vote, so you can vote here.
Well, if.
So registered vote, if registered voting is not gonna, being a registered voter will not, one, you don't. It's you legally do not have to register to vote, but I mean, I, it. With somebody who is a summer resident here. I would rather have the the umbrella big enough to cover somebody who's a summer resident who needs a scholarship. Than have it so small.
Well, why would that be though? You think about it, a summer resident.
It's not somebody.
It's not somebody who's gonna need this, alright.
Exactly, that, but that's why, it's okay for it to be a big enough um umbrella. But it it's the need, you know, because, well, that's what the scholarship committee will seem to try.
So you're saying make it as inclusive as you can, but.
And then you know, when you have safeguards within it, so that to to take out people who, because. I mean. Historically, there have been summer residents who did need scholarships and so if. If a family still has a house and they, and the person, you know, lives in. You know, in the city and comes out here. I mean, it's possible to have somebody who could need it.
So then maybe it's better than just to say, you have, because it's just library.
Library card.
You have a library card, you're eligible.
Absolutely, that's, that's my thing.
But, you know, the donor wants to specifically need dates and that.
Yeah, but that can be done, that right.
That that's fine, then you can always adjust it to your.
Because you can't predict who's gonna need it based solely on whether or not they live here year round. There are plenty of people who live here year round who wouldn't, who wouldn't be. You know, who might not meet the financial requirement that the donor wants.
Okay, so we are going to meet soon and we're gonna conclude the donor here too.
Okay.
Cause he is due a response.
Maybe we could do a a quick meeting like, like us made a such great English. Some structure there. Perhaps we would need a like an eleven and invite him in at eleven thirty.
Very good.
Yes, so we can make sure all of our.
We'll piggyback him in too.
Let's piggyback ever.
That's right.
You mentioned that the school is saying their scholarships like go on, on board, you know, unused. Someone I have been went to college on all those little scholarships that go unused. Is there any way we could do something at the library to talk about scholarships that go unused?
We could.
Because that would be a great. I mean.
By the way, we have one too.
Maybe else one applies, you know?
Well, what I was also talking is, is if you want a big scholarship, get a lot of the little ones first, because then you can have them. It's like your resident, you got a list of what you already got. So. It was better to give them another person, you know, get them.
Discuss further with Margaret Mato about that. She would give more detailed.
It'd be nice to do a program like come s- summer and and sort of.
I'll have, I'll have Liz reach out.
Yeah, and then the fall to, yeah, and where to find.
Cause fall is really when, when you want it.
Start looking at, yeah.
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 Okay, on to all business with all our favorite topics.
Yeah, we have a proposal from Lizardos. And just so you know, um, he gave me a fee structure, which I promptly. Printed and left in the printer. Um, but um, what he basically said was. If we hit that sort of fee structure, hold on, it's in my email.
Okay.
Wait, it's a, wait, page eighty-nine has.
No, 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 that's not, that's, that's a desk.
Let me pull that up.
That's a scope.
So he says, he says, see attached, this is a rough hourly number depending on level of employee. I don't anticipate. See attached, this is a rough hourly number depending on level of employee. I don't anticipate out of scope items for this project. But when it comes down to any items that arise outside of the scope of work, we would typically raise the flag at that point to let you know. There's an item that's not in our base scope, and at that point, put together an additional service proposal to complete the work. This way, everyone is on the same page and there are no surprises. The hourly billing schedule. Ranges from two seventy-five for a principal to eighty dollars for a technical aid. So, yeah. They're cheap, Dave. Uh, project managers are at two oh five, senior engineers one seventy-five. Uh, not so senior engineers one fifty, senior designer one forty-five, not so senior designer one ten, dress person ninety-five.
So we have to vote on this proposal?
If you want to move forward.
I just have a question, Kelly. Um, not included services are uh filing with the building department. I think we had a good discussion on that. Whether to use a local company, but they, I think they said they could do it.
It actually says in here, assist owners, building department expediter in filling out technical portions. We had discussed. Having an expediter.
Which you want an expediter.
Which we want.
You don't want, stop calling them expediters, they are permit coordinators, because. Expediting, it it's not to make it go faster, it's to make it go at all. So.
But I thought you had a discussion that they have experience doing that themselves.
Lizardos?
Yeah.
No, they, you don't, you. You do not want Lizardo doing.
Okay.
Yeah, we want somebody who's well versed in our friends in the village.
So.
We need to start with that.
People, that would be good. Um, the person who does the most in the, in Sag Harbor. Which is not my favorite firm, because they are also the ones who drop the ball the most often.
Okay.
Um, but let me, I'll give you some names.
And then maybe, well, yeah. Let me make some names. Oh, fair enough.
Yeah.
Um, I also did.
Oh, I actually, I I know you should, because she likes to do this whole projects.
Okay. So we'll talk and then we'll reach out and get a proposal. Um, the other thing that is not um included, so we'll have to. Go back to our pals at Delta Well is, of course, the abandonment of the existing geotop box. Um. It's to abandon them? Yeah, it's not cheap.
Yeah.
But it's.
You gotta do it.
You gotta do it.
Yeah.
Um, it's not cheap, but it's not, if I remember correctly from Bridgehampton, it's not nearly as expensive as you think it would be.
Well, it's not as expensive.
No, they're, they're, they're filling the hole, they're not a.
And just so everybody is clear, this is to the engineering design, this is not for the equipment.
Thank you.
But I still think it's a, it's a good.
That is fixed, yeah.
And I'm very happy that it is fixed. I was, I'm surprised that they're doing.
Yeah. Um.
Do we have any coupons? Promo codes.
Promo codes.
Okay, we need a motion to uh approve Lizardo's proposal.
I'm moving.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Hi. Yes.
Post. Yes.
Lorian staff replacement is moving along. Um, I have to reach out to the flooring guy, cause he was supposed to come out and I haven't heard from him. But um. Not a, not a big deal.
We're still on target for um.
We are still on target. All of the stuff. Has been ordered. So what they had to do, because we're ordering off the new New York State contract, is they had to break everything out.
Sure.
Send it out. There was a couple of things I had to sign. I have all the prices are the same, but because of the way the other companies do business. It's a whole thing.
What's, so what's our, our timeframe to do this again?
Uh, we're looking for the last week in August, first week in September.
Okay.
Um, so we're, we're still on track for that. Um. All furniture is ordered.
Excellent.
Um. That's all I got. Isn't that enough?
Good job, Kelly. Good.
I did nothing.
Good job, Dan.
Damn did everything.
I did.
Um.
Damn chikory.
Don't be surprised if this shows up though.
No, I will, you know, you know what, there was, there was one thing that we did. The file cabinets that slide under the desk. Actually have a cushion that goes on top of them, um, so somebody could easily sit on it. Um, we chose what slate gray to match the.
Yeah, this would be made perfect cushion.
That was not swayed.
Man, you know, throw your way around.
School you can pull out.
Yeah, right? So, okay, you was, you were bad, you have the soul.
We're gonna have a vest that made for Dan. I'd, I'd wear it, I'd wear it to the board meeting.
Yes, you're, Jesus and.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, moving on to new business.
All right, we have a. Big and trustee seat.
Certainly.
Can I um? Make a suggestion?
Sure.
Can we leave it empty? Through this year and then whoever gets elected in September, have been start in Sept- and start asking if they. Wish to start in September and get an extra few months.
That is an option. That, that is one of your options. Your options are to appoint someone. To leave it vacant, have somebody run for. A term that starts in September, um, or have somebody run for the regular term, but appoint them to start early.
Yeah, um, I like that idea.
I like that idea, but then you're having two new trustees and you're picking one of them over the other. Could be a little dicey.
Uh, to start early.
You offer them both.
Well, you could ask, you could ask if one of, because one of, can, someone can always a- attend and be, be public.
Right.
I mean, really, if they're both elected in September, they should vote.
Start in September.
Start attending board meeting.
Yeah, yeah, nobody does that except Delia.
I went to retire. I, I don't have a problem, you know, until, until the bunch of vote, I don't think that. It's, uh, I just think it's not necessary to like rush somebody in for like six months. You have to be careful also of forum rules in case anybody's gonna be going away for vacation. Purposes, like, there's any.
So keep in mind, our quorum is based on eight.
Yeah.
Even because the scene is vacant.
Yeah.
So quorum is technically five. Um. So. Don't go on vacation.
Is that gonna be a problem? Is anybody planning on going on vacation together?
And I know it's the hour next week, next week.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we gotta bring a boat back, when we have a meeting, we're good.
I break my heart.
So have a forum every time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so we need to move this?
No, you, you don't have to do anything. Done. Um.
Are we all agreed on that?
Are we all agreed on that?
I probably.
Do we have any other opinions? We can also revisit it next month if.
If all hell breaks loose.
If we're all going on vacation.
But if, if you all decide to go on vacation. And or somebody magically arrives on our doorstep and says, you know, like. I would love nothing more than that.
I'd love to see.
Yeah. Um. Okay, appointment of trustee to the policy committee. Our policy committee is a committee of two with Bill X officio, um, so. Did you wanna appoint somebody to that?
I would like to appoint Robin.
That we do need to.
I will second that nomination.
All in favor?
Ah, thank you.
Yes. All right.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so one of the things that the, the friends wanna sort of have a longer conversation about, uh, amongst the felt, but also. I know we, we had probably wanna have a conversation here, um, at board meeting. Is what we would like to do, um, sort of in celebration of. Gloria in the library, if anything.
Something after her.
Um, name something after her, or, you know, I still really, really want to put a little free pantry on this property.
I would put that.
Um, and it's, it's something we can, we can put a plaque on.
Yeah.
Do we want?
That's, sounds nice.
Let's speak.
Very nice.
Name.
Nat?
Yeah.
I can, I can talk to Nat about that.
Yep.
Um, let him know that that's what we would like to do.
Yeah, or we're gonna do that for, um.
When you're in.
I would, well, here's what I did. I really wanna put a little free pantry. On the library property and um. Was sort of of the, the idea that if that could fulfill a need. For something to, to put a plaque on, we could have done that for, for someone else, but that doesn't.
But she's getting white little puffy flowers.
She's getting humming flowers.
Which.
We're ducker.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this is good. The only other thing is that Gloria and Nat are. Um, also very big election volunteers, so they, you know. That's something that I also, you know, know is very important to Gloria, that at the side is just the library, so. Like, but I'm not sure, you know.
Well, we.
The library already does really good election. Their information, so it's not like we can have a special series for that. I like the.
What we do is, if we ever have a lecture or something, program.
Yeah, there's always something else that could possibly, you know, pop up.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
And you're on. All right, so my mother, who was a librarian upstate, I was talking to her today and she said to say hi to everybody. I said, Mom, you don't know anybody. She says, tell them I said hi anyway, so. My mother said hi.
Well, she's watching.
Yeah, I'm sure she is.
She, she is not, nobody is watching.
Hi, Mom. Sorry, my mother said. All right, I'm talking, I heard that she said hi.
My email to see if I got an email from Nada saying I couldn't find the link to.
No, I still have the see.
Okay.
She said she wasn't gonna come, she's boycotting me.
She did not say that.
She said she wasn't coming. But anyway, that's my, my public, here's probably first, my public's a tie.
Oh, yes, we are also doing, so June third is the, um. Pride parade in East Hampton. The staff is going to be marching in that. I don't know if you all gave me t-shirt sizes, you're getting t-shirts, whether you like or not. Um.
That's on the pin.
Really, it's a big glitter.
Yeah, they're gonna be blue this year, they're electric blue, and the bookmark in. I have to order a t-shirt before I leave tonight.
Okay.
Um. I said that every day, that's what I. Um, the, um, the bookmark in the Germaniac is supposed to be, um, the bright black, it's pretty. Um, and so we're, we're pretty excited about that.
After his t- uh, t-shirt made it into the club I made for Sage, I'm, the t-shirts from childhood.
Oh, very.
It's a fun question, are you having the, the man?
We are having Dan and the clothes. Um, because I. Write nothing down in my calendar, um, I managed to, um, double. Book myself, um, I will not be at the parade because Donovan's. Dance recital is that morning at eleven AM and I have to watch him tap dance.
You absolutely have to watch.
Yeah, you can't get.
But I will, I will be back here for.
Now that you have to watch it, you have to tape it so the rest must.
I will, I promise you I will, because it's going to be adorable.
Jazz hands and everything.
My.
Six, seven.
My child suffers through ballet, that's. So, uh. And then in the hour of noon, yeah. What do we need to do? We're gonna do some, um. Delicious treats down in this program room here, we're gonna get some, some. Tartar cutlery and some, some, something sweet.
Ice cream.
Ice cream, we can do ice cream. Um, and then we will, um, also. Have a little sort of. I don't wanna say memorial, let's say celebration of life up in the rotunda, so if any of you would like to say nice things about Gloria.
What is this?
That would be great, before we come eat ice cream and then please. June third at four, yeah.
Um, you know, I spoke with Ann Lee, but I should have. Once been a trustee, and she was friends with a political camp, and I mentioned that the opportunity. To say something.
Yes.
How, how long is that gonna go on? It's something.
Hour, hour and a half.
As long as the ice cream will do.
Well, the problem is I don't get out of work this spring till five thirty, I might have to leave early with ice cream.
Okay.
There'll be some, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They'll be soon by then.
What's that?
Okay, period for public expression?
Okay, put the checks, so we do the deposits at the bank, we hand them just right away, we can check them online.
Okay. Okay, so you do get your. Well, as, yeah, I love that. Cause it's much easier to look them up online than to look them up online.
We have to go to. Okay, so it's eight oh five, can we have a motion to go into?
I make a motion to go into executive session.
One second, uh, okay, give me one second, eight oh five.
Eight oh five.
All right, give me one second.
Okay. Okay, and I have a minute, a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, definitely.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, good day, move everybody, all in favor.
Ah.
Okay.
Okay, and I have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn in second.
Okay, hold favor.
Aye.
Okay, good day.